And welcome to the Livonia City Council. The invocation will be given by Councilman Bar. Are you doing the pledge then?
Sure, we'll do a prayer.
Okay, we're doing a prayer.
Laura, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for our city. We thank you for your blessings in our city over the years. Even as we've come through a season of Thanksgiving, it's appropriate for us to pause and recognize the blessings of liberty that we enjoy in this country and certainly within our community. And we just pray that this council would act with wisdom, that we would execute our duties faithfully on behalf of the residents, that we would see what is the good, right, and the true, and that you would guide our decisions and continue to guide our city. We pray these names, these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman. We'd like to welcome you to the December 2 study meeting, which is a non-voting meeting. This meeting will, though, set the agenda for the 1,887th regular meeting, which will be a voting meeting and which will take place on Wednesday, or, excuse me, Monday, December 16 of this year. We do have two council absences. We have Councilman Meakin and Councilwoman White that won't be with us this evening. And Council, do we have anyone you'd like to introduce in the audience or otherwise? No? Okay, then we'll move into this audience communication. Anybody wishing to address the council to anything that's not on the yellow sheet, we welcome you to come up to the podium my left or right, give us your name and address for the record. See no one rushing up?
Madam President.
Yes, please, go right ahead.
I'll slip in one quick announcement here. Since I said in the last meeting that I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make every effort to be here at the next meeting for that vote, but I may have to do a little bit of gymnastics to be here for part of the meeting, so I'm just gonna say this now. My oldest daughter has coming up in a couple weeks her sweet 16 birthday, so it would be, of all birthdays, for me to miss announcing a city council meeting. That's one I don't want to miss, and she wouldn't want me to either. So Macy, early, I'll wish you a very happy birthday, and no, you're not getting a car yet.
Darn. All right. You wrecked her surprise. Okay, anyone else? Seeing and hearing no one, then we'll move into our study agenda. This is a study meeting. There will be, again, no votes taken this evening. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include an approving, a denying, or a referring resolution to a committee and/or a department for the report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will be simply received and filed and held for the information of the city council. Please note that all the items that are on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Monday, December 16, where they'll be officially voted on. If you'd like to participate in tonight's meeting, please approach podium my left or right and give us your name and address when you're called under our new business section. Okay, thank you very much. And Council, we'll move into new business. Our first one, number one, is a request of designation of a nonprofit organization. Heinzman, are you here this evening, sir? You wanna approach the podium, please, and give us your name and address. This is for an Irish Dance Boosters Club, Inc., as required by the state of Michigan to obtain a charitable gaming license to host fundraising events in the future. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Carl Heinzman. I'm the uncle of John Heinzman II. He's stuck in Louisville, Kentucky right now. Due to climate weather and cancellation of flights, so he asked me just to come in and represent him, I guess, as much as I can.
Great. Okay, did you wanna, what were you trying to do here, sir, the get?
Madam President.
Yes, your gaming license, it looks like.
I believe this is a well-known organization and, you know, I think people are familiar with them throughout the metropolitan area. I'm happy to offer an approving resolution for consent if there are no objections.
Certainly. Any objections or any other comments from the council? Anyone from the audience? And would you like that on consent, council member?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. On consent, item one, madam clerk. Item two, then?
Tell your nephew you did well.
Pardon?
Tell him you did good.
Okay.
Tell him to take you out to lunch or something.
That's right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, race. Ask him to do a jig. No. Okay, item two is a collection of the Livonia Public Schools District Taxes for the year 2020. And this is brought to us from the Office of the City Clerk, forwarding communication from Secretary of the Board of Education dated October 29 of this year, requesting that the city continue to collect one half of the district taxes with summer tax collection and the remaining one half with the winter collection, commencing on July 1 of 2020. Anything to add, madam clerk?
No, this is housekeeping that we have to do every year, so we could put it on the tax bill.
Right.
Madam President.
Yes, go right ahead.
As the clerk just said, this is an annual housekeeping issue. I'd be happy to offer this for approving for consent if there's no objection.
Okay, any others? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to item two? Hearing and seeing no one, item two is on consent then. Item three is a determination of the Local Board of Officers Compensation Commission. This is brought to us again by the city clerk, the salaries of elected officials for the calendar year of 2020-2021 in accordance with Section 2.48.030 of Chapter 2.48 of the Livonia Ordinances as amended. Madam clerk, any comment on this one?
No. Nothing further, it's all here.
Okay, in your packet you have all the recommendations from the local compensation committee, starting with everyone who's elected, it looks like. Okay, council, any comment? Any direction?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is in keeping with the motions that we made in the previous meeting regarding other groups throughout the city. I will offer an approving resolution on this item.
Thank you. Item three has gotten approving. Are there any others? Yes.
I just have a comment.
Certainly.
I would like, I'm fine with that, although I know that the Officers Compensation Commission had some information available to them about comparisons with other cities with these positions, and I would be interested in seeing that. I didn't see in our packet this time, so I'm fine with the motion, but if we could, prior to our next meeting, have the appropriate people provide that to us, I would appreciate seeing it.
We can go ahead and send you the copy of the packet. I would've thought it actually would've been sent to you already.
And maybe I missed it.
The packet that the commissioner, no, I don't see it in mine either. So it should've been, we can send you the packet that the commissioners had to work on.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point, and it would be nice to see one of them here tonight, too, from the Compensation Commission, or?
Yes, it would be.
It really would. Of course, we don't want to knock them, because, you know, they do consider money, but then again, yes.
Madam President, can we leave?
Go right ahead.
Can we leave that off consent, please?
Yes, let's leave it off consent, and that'll go on regular then, at the request of the maker. Anybody from the audience? Yes, please, come on up. Is that Jim? No, that's not Jim.
Maybe.
It is you, okay.
Hi, I'm Bill Schmidt. I live 29688 McIntyre. I'm not Jim.
No, you're not Jim.
He is my brother.
He is?
Yeah.
That's in the next item.
Yeah, Hyacinth House.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we moved on from item three to item four?
Not yet.
No, no, we haven't quite got, almost, so.
You're on deck.
So, I didn't know this was on the agenda, but I did a quick little Google thing.
Yeah.
I don't know what the exact compensation is for the clerk and the treasurer, but it's my understanding it's about eighty, eighty-nine? Eighty-nine grand.
Well, it will be.
And the, it's eighty-six now, it's, you wanna make it ninety. So I Google up a little bit, average household income in Livonia, their competing websites. One says $69,000 for household income. Individual income, thirty-two grand. Thirty-two grand.
Mm-hmm.
For an individual.
Okay.
Thirty-two grand for an individual versus ninety. That's a pretty good spread. I think you need to take that into consideration when you go to your next meeting.
Well, the eighty-nine won't come through until 2021. If that gives you any comfort at all, they'll be at eighty-seven, seven fifty next year, starting next year, 2020. Just, just, just giving you numbers, that's all I'm giving you.
Eighty-seven to thirty-two.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead, Councilman Crisp.
As the gentleman pointed out, there are a multitude of websites out there. We have our official data that gets brought to us from a council perspective, and I know my immediate reaction to the numbers that you threw out there for median household income are staggeringly lower than anything that we've encountered. And anything that I've looked at here has the median household income significantly higher than that, up to, up to seventy-two thousand, I mean, it's all over the place. And?
So that's household income, not individual income, right? Is that what you're looking at?
Unfortunately, I just changed off that website, but while I understand your point, I don't think that is how we are measuring the value of that position in the community.
Just that the people that are paying for that, right? Just so I understand.
I understand the point you're trying to make, sir.
And what is that point?
That you are claiming that there's a significant income disparity between those positions and the people paying the taxes.
There you go.
How'd I do?
You did pretty well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McIntyre, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to explain how, how these recommendations come. We have a commission, the LOC-C, the Local Officers Compensation Commission, and their job is to look at the jobs, their job is to look at the salaries in the private sector for comparable jobs and the salaries in surrounding neighborhoods. To take one job that has very specific qualifications and responsibilities and compare it to an average income in our city, that's apples and oranges, sir. And if you were to look at jobs in our city, jobs held by residents in our city that have similar requirements and responsibilities, you would find parity. I mean, this is no different. We have physicians who live in our city who probably make $200,000 a year. And, you know, your point is the taxpayers pay it, our salaries, but it doesn't, you know, if you're making those comparisons, it doesn't really matter who's paying it. And you wouldn't say, well, a physician who lives in Livonia makes $200,000, and the average income is $32,000. So the physician then is overpaid. It's the same sort of comparison. And if you look at, if you look at what neighboring cities pay, and I'm proud of the fact that Livonia pays on the low side, okay? We don't look at the salaries of, of neighboring communities or same communities and say we ought to be at the top of that. We say we ought to be in the middle or a little bit below the middle. So, so I'm just gonna tell you, I appreciate your comments, it's always good to hear from people, but, but I don't accept that as a valid comparison, so thank you.
So, let me ask you a question, 'cause you posed that. You'll be bringing those communities that you're comparing to, to the next meeting? Or are they available now?
The, sir, the data's available.
Because if you're comparing Livonia against, excuse me, if you're comparing Livonia against Birmingham, or against Royal Oak?
Right.
Sir, we're not, and you're welcome, you are welcome to go to the internet and look at the salaries of comparable communities, such as Dearborn, Wesleyan, Dearborn Heights, and you're welcome to do that.
Okay. All ready.
I guess my question would be?
Thank you, madam chair. Sir, one point of clarification. You know, the gentleman cited a number somewhere approximately twenty-nine thousand five hundred-ish. Was that about what you said, thirty-two?
Just a website I looked at.
The fact of the matter is, that's a per capita income.
Let him talk.
That's a per capita income number, so that is counting the work that the clerk and treasurer do and other appointed people, to my six-year-old daughter. Excuse me, I'm sorry, she turned seven last week. It's not the same. It's an apples and oranges comparison, as has been pointed out.
Okay, thank you very much then.
Thank you.
Yes, okay. Where was that, where, what motion did we have on that?
Approving on regular.
On regular.
Approving on regular, and we're asking for a report as well?
You want, we will send you a copy of the packet that the commissioners had, and I believe you are asking for a commissioner to be present.
Yeah, at least one.
Okay.
If they could be pleased, maybe the mayor's office can help with that.
I don't know if we've ever had a commissioner at it, but I mean, I'm saying we can have them.
Well, maybe we need to start a new trend then. Yes, go right ahead.
Can I make one final comment?
Yes, please.
The LOC-C meetings are open to the public, as of all, all our meetings, so, you know, I encourage people who are concerned about these issues to go on the city website and look to see when these committees meet, and you are welcome, you are more than welcome to attend and, and share your opinions, so thank you.
Okay.
None of this is done a secret.
Okay, thank you. No, if it was, we wouldn't have this happening tonight. Okay, item four is a request for council approval on, on a proposed lot split. This is brought to us from the Department of Assessment, counsel for a property located at the southwest corner of Robert and McIntyre. Is this street named after you? Okay.
It's got an A in it.
New data as well is on this, avenues in the northeast quarter of Section 35, and that is 29568 McIntyre and 29551 Robert and 29525 Robert, to waive the property depth to the width of the ratio for these properties. Mr. Tarmina, is this you, or?
I can provide some background.
Could you? Yeah, thank you.
So this is a lot split and combination request. It involves three planted lots of record that are located at the corner of Robert and McIntyre avenues. The three contiguous properties include lots 305, 306, and 307 of Bel Air Garden subdivision. The zoning is R1, one family residential, and all three lots contain developed single-family homes. The proposal would split thirty-five and a half feet from the rear of Lot 305, which is located at 29551 Robert Avenue, and combine it with the rear of Lot 307, which is 29586 McIntyre, to create a new parcel. So this map shows you what the three adjoining parcels look like today. This is the split superimposed on an aerial photograph, and you'll see the three parcels are now identified as parcel one, parcel two, and parcel three.
Three, yeah.
The thirty-five feet being added to parcel three is being provided at the rear of parcel one, as you can see from this, this plan. The area of 29551 Robert Avenue would be reduced to approximately 5,565 square feet. This is the one that's referred to as parcel one on the survey, and this does not meet the R1 lot area requirements, which is 7,200 square feet. Additionally, this will create deficiency with respect to the rear yard setback of the house on parcel one. Per Chapter 16, the council can waive the minimum lot area requirement. That does require no fewer than five affirmative votes. For the setback deficiency, a variance is going to be needed from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Parcels two and three are in compliance with the R1 lot size requirements per this plan. And that's a summation of the proposal.
Okay, thanks. Council, any questions? For Mr.? Yes, go right ahead, councilman. Yeah, I did, I did say there was new data. Do you want me to read the new data?
Just summarize. Money is owed.
Okay, let's see.
Do you want me to do it?
Oh, there's a water bill outstanding. Did you guys hear about that?
It's paid automatically, yeah.
Automatic deduction.
Yeah, it's automatic deduction.
You might want to check with the treasurer's office on that, okay? Because we have the new data.
All right.
It says that, I don't want to embarrass you, but?
No, it's okay, you won't embarrass me. If it's, if it's owed, I'll pay it, but to my knowledge, it shouldn't be, but.
Yeah.
How much is it?
Seven twenty-seven.
Yeah. And thirty cents, don't forget the thirty-five.
29525 Robert.
That's Gina. Me?
May want to look into that.
Merry Christmas, Gina.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah.
So typically?
Yes, go right ahead.
So first, just, it's just a point of how we do things in the city here, when there is an outstanding amount due to the city, we make sure to bring that up.
Absolutely.
When there's something pending. But pushing that to the side, number one, please check with the, the water department in regards to the balance.
Yes.
Listen, I, the graphic says it all, and I don't think this makes any sense from, even if this would work for the people who live in these houses right now, it absolutely will be detrimental, detrimental to property values going forward. This would have never been approved like this when these homes were built, and I don't think they should be approved like this now, is what is proposed. You're essentially creating a house with almost no backyard, next other houses that do have backyards and an odd lot. I mean, with all due respect, I mean, this is just, this isn't, isn't at all how we do things in the city, or to my knowledge, have ever done things to this, in the city. So that's my opinion, right off the bat. It is an extremely high burden, if you want me to think something else. So thank you.
Councilman McIntyre.
I, I would have to hear extremely compelling reasons as to why we should create a non-conforming spot. We look to, we look to correct non-conforming properties to make them conforming, and we're going in the opposite direction here. So it would be like Mr. Jolly, extremely high, a high bar for me to understand why we would want to do this.
Councilman Bar.
I concur. I just have to ask, because I'm just intrigued. I'm looking at this on Google Maps. This is, who, who lives on McIntyre Street?
I live on McIntyre. She lives on McIntyre. I own both these properties.
It's a beautiful setup, from what I can see here. And it looks like you've already got a fence installed, and it looks like the pool already, I mean, just?
Hold on, hold on. Go right ahead, let him speak, and then we'll get to you.
I, I was just, you, you already have a fence installed there, right?
Everything has been as it is for the last fifteen or more years.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask. So I guess, good for you that you've got such a great relationship with the resident on, which is that your daughter, I understand, or what?
My daughter's next to me on the other side, it's not involved.
Anyway, good for you that you've got such a great relationship with them that they do that, but I, I would concur with my colleagues that I don't see this making sense from a city perspective. I mean, as long as you live there, it looks like you've got a great setup, but unfortunately, you're at a lot of risk if that house on Robert ever sells. Because I just, I would concur with my colleagues, it doesn't make sense to do this lot split. But man, in the meantime, I'm glad you've enjoyed it for fifteen years, and I hope you can continue to, because that looks beautiful.
Right, well?
Sir, hold on one minute.
Sure, I'm sorry.
Anybody else from the council? Okay, now we're gonna go to you and state your name and address, and then everybody else that's with you can do that, too.
All right, Robert J. Tranquil, 29568 McIntyre.
Okay.
My name, Gina Anagayan, 29525 Robert Drive.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
My name's Elizabeth Pizzo, I'm his daughter. I live at 29600 McIntyre, but I also own, co-own with him, the 29551 McIntyre, or Robert Drive home.
Which is parcel one, are you owning, or which one?
My dad owns parcel two and parcel one.
Okay.
And Gina owns parcel three, and I'm on the?
No, no, I'm with the two.
Yeah, I'm the two.
Wait, or, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm the two.
Yeah.
I'm on the other side of him at 29600 McIntyre.
Which?
Parcel number?
Three?
Well?
Where's the pool?
No, I'm, I'm next door to him, so I'm not on one of those parcels, but I do co-own with him the Robert Drive home.
Okay.
Okay.
So basically, we have three homes. We, buying his and the Robert Drive, if that makes sense.
Go ahead, continue, sir.
All right, well, if I give you a little background in history, I've been in my location for nineteen years. I was running initially. Some of these things happened, these divisions, long, long ago, and we thought they were amicable by everybody who was involved. The person who previously lived, previously lived in her home died, unfortunately, and prior to his death, he gave me a parcel of land, that little tiny space, shows the angle from heading into parcel two, which is her property now. So we were able to get heavy equipment into the backyard to do a lot of the things that we did. It gave me opportunity to put a six-foot fence or gate there to get into the, the property, and that pool's been there for many, many years, but the, Corey Berniac was a person who resided at 29551 Robert Drive, and at one point in time, he and his sister, I thought were the only owners, and they sold me, sold me a long time ago for $8,000, the half of the back, well, about that thirty-five feet, I guess. And I was gonna buy the entire property at some point in time. The property went into foreclosure, I was supposed to know about it immediately, but wasn't told, and another investor got it before me. He owned it for about three days, and I paid ten more extra $1,000, so there wouldn't be any problems legally about me owning half of his backyard. So then, I put probably $200,000 above and beyond what I paid for this property into the property. I've probably had twenty people who want to purchase that lot and that home, and with a small lot, because there are a lot of older people who don't want a lot of property. You have other properties in Livonia that do have very small setbacks in other subdivisions, and I'm not trying to say, I understand Mr. Tarmino told me before about the hundred-and-ten, I think, foot setback. But as far as everybody in the neighborhood is concerned, they know how well we take care of the property and how well things are, and I don't think it's anything detrimental to the city by any stretch of the imagination. I believe I could sell that house to short, number one, for $250,000 tomorrow, if I wanted to, to an elderly couple, or many elderly couples who've come by. I've got a first-floor laundry in there, everything in the property is top of the line. I believe by the sale of that property, it'd make other properties even more valuable in Livonia, but I'm not intending on selling at this moment. Actually, Gina's mother, who lives Vietnam?
Yeah.
Yeah, they want to purchase the house and live next door to her, and they're an elderly couple, but don't want the stairs and all that. But, but I've put two egress windows in the basement to make it, there's, there's nothing I haven't done, there's nothing I haven't done to that house to make it?
Pass a picture.
Much more exclusive.
This is what it looked like. We did not, this is not a detriment. You really did a ton of work to make the house.
But as I said already, it's my fault that this went on this long. I probably didn't even realize that I was doing anything wrong, considering it was all my property, until I think Mr. Tarmino, when I came to him and showed him what I was intending on proposing to the council. But as I said, this has been something that's been this way for many, many years, and I was told I had to show a hardship. Well, the hardship is that my lot and my pool and the deck around that encroach on the lot that's a smaller lot. And again, back then, paying thousands of dollars for pools and all that, had no idea that it was going to be a, a conflict, again, not understanding zoning ordinances and laws. But, but I have done everything to make Livonia better. I've got an appliance, application for variance that was gonna go to the zoning board that pretty much talks about how everyone in that neighborhood really likes what we have done, and I would assume that real estate taxes would be more on my larger property, and I don't care if you even kept the other one the same. In fact, the one on, on Robert Drive is about $500 more a year than mine because of all the extra improvements.
Okay.
But I have no problem with all that. I want to make Livonia better.
Sure. Councilman, Vice President Jolly has a comment.
So let me first say, I, I don't think you're a bad guy. I don't think you intentionally did anything wrong. But when we look at this from, when I look at this from a city's perspective, it's our job to have the planning in place and to make sure that homes are of a certain caliber, and it's, it means more than just the physical appearance and upkeep of the house. It means that there is conformity from, you know, house to house in a neighborhood. Honestly, I appreciate that this may have happened over time, and you thought you were[1776.73] and you thought you were doing right the entire time. This is not in the best interest of the city. It's not in the best interest of future homeowners in any of the three houses that are identified up there, to be honest with you. When people move into a residential neighborhood, they expect it to be like in a manner of ways, right? And one of the reasons why Livonia is so highly sought after and ranked in these national lists of most desirable zip codes and stuff like that is because we don't let people do whatever they want to do, even if it seemed like they were doing the right thing at the time. You know, I look at this, and it seems like, you know, although you've purchased money, or you've paid money for purchasing some degree of the backyard there, you know, I hope you've consulted with an attorney in regards to real estate law and property rights, because I think at some point, whether it's now or in the future, you're gonna have to deal with that. But from a city's perspective, there is a simple solution that the property line remains as it originally was, at least in terms of the parcels, leaving parcel one, two, and three as they initially were. And, you know, if you're using it in this way at this time, I mean, I don't necessarily think that we would be stopping you, right?
I understand that.
If you want to go forward and completely alter this for the future, I can't support that.
Well, I understand your position, I guess, in a way, but I believe that you're misjudging a lot of things based on a difference of a property line. If you look at property directly behind me, it's not marked, but the one behind parcel five, whatever the largest one mine is, directly behind that, there's a 110-foot setback, and one and only one inch behind that place, it's a pie-shaped lot to that 110 feet. That parcel is not much bigger than the parcel that I have reduced the size of, and mine's in a triangle, and hers is in a pie. And there is very little difference. So when you're talking about having the same kinds of situations... I have a house in, excuse me, in Novi, where the guy next to me had a pie-shaped lot. It was probably 2,000 square feet less than mine. He paid maybe $10,000 less for the property before we built it. These are not exactly the same, but I'm saying, you talk about a detriment. If in fact... I'm seventy-four years old. I'm gonna die maybe tomorrow, maybe twenty years from now, I don't know. But that's why, another reason I wanted to come here and make sure we could get this thing done in the past, so I don't have to leave this with my children, have them have the problem. But if in fact, I have to go back to the actual original, as I said, if you look at my pool, that deck encroaches on the back half of the other lot, the lot on Robert. And there isn't any human being that I've seen come by my property and not want to buy any of those, including hers. She's maintained hers tremendously well, too. But hey, hers is, I'm encroaching on her property, so if that didn't pass, that's another fence that has to be torn down. If I don't get the approval of the council, I will eventually have to tear another fence down, which is at least $3,000 to $6,000, to move it back on half of my deck. And it will make no value better to anybody. It'll actually decrease the value. The way these are situated right now, all the city will have more dollar value than any other way. Even though you don't see it that way, well, I think you're wrong.
Okay. Yeah. Councilman Jolly, if he's almost done, and then Councilman Bar.
I'll just say, listen, we spent a lot of time when we were building new neighborhoods, right? And I presume somebody spent a lot of time looking at this plan back in the day when these houses were originally developed.
Sure.
I don't think this is in the long-term best interest for that neighborhood or any future... Listen, however...
Tell me where your detriment lies.
I...
I mean, I'm just asking.
Mr. Tarmino, what is this neighborhood zoned as?
R1.
Okay, it's already zoned R1, which is the lowest zoning for a residential neighborhood in terms of the smallest lot sizes. And then this significantly makes that smaller. Our zoning here goes 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, then RUF. This is the lowest zone residential lot to begin with. And then you want to take away the bulk of the backyard from that. And listen, again, I'm not trying to give you a hard time.
Well, I know you're not, I understand you're doing what you're...
Listen, I'd love the backyard, and I'd love to be there, too, right?
Right.
But from a long-term perspective, I would suggest that you have to figure out some other answer that is not asking us to approve this proposed parcel split, as you've indicated.
Okay.
Because I think from a long-term city perspective, future owners, future residents, it doesn't make sense.
If someone likes that size lot, how can that be detrimental? You have other subdivisions, I was told not to bring this up, because it has no bearing. But you have other subdivisions that have less backyard, less square footage off of Ann Arbor Trail than this, you know, this lot that I'm proposing. But that's got all the lots small like that, I understand that. But if somebody wants to buy a house, or whatever, they're looking at that house, that property, and that's what they want to purchase. For example, I mean, I don't want to take them much...
Let's not go too far down here, because I'm about done, and I think you've made your point. I think we just, we're on different perspectives here. I'll just leave you with this, and I'll leave everybody else who's listening to this, watching at home. What if everybody did this? What if five people did this? What if ten people did this, at different houses? And then the zoning becomes all for naught, and that's just it. And I, listen, I can't give you my support. Mr. Bar, I believe he has the floor.
Yes, he does.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, you seem like a great guy. Frankly, all three of you seem like great people. You're the type of people we want in Livonia. You're the, this is the type of neighbor relationship we want in Livonia. There's a lot of things about this that's really good. What you've done to your house to improve the property is the type of thing we want in Livonia. I think the lot that you have here is extremely attractive. And I do believe that, I mean, I think you're right. There are people that would take a house like that one with a small yard, I get all that. There is a solution for you, and the solution is you continue to own both lots. I mean, I know other people in Livonia that own double lots and have fenced around them as if they're one yard. I mean, that is the way to make it happen. That's essentially what you've done. And, you know, if, long-term, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know what the legal ramifications are, but I imagine you could sell those two properties together if somebody wanted to. I mean, so there is a solution around this, but from a long-term planning perspective of the city, it just flat-out doesn't make sense. I, again, with all due respect to you, and thank you for explaining this, and you've been very competent and polite, and I just appreciate you being here tonight. But with everything we talked about, I think we need to forward this. I'm an offerer denying on this, and I'll offer that for consent, if there's no objection.
Okay, denying is one. Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Kritzman.
If this did come back to us, I wouldn't be on council at that point, my term's up at the end of the year. But I look at it, and I say, all right, maybe there's a middle ground between what you're talking about. I mean, you have stuff that's already installed and in place. I'm not gonna get into the legal ramifications of how that occurred and whatnot, because I would not be the expert in that case. But I, too, think your solution is too far-reaching. It leaves that property on Robert with virtually no backyard whatsoever, almost an unsafe condition. Knowing that there are things that... Is there an opportunity to take less? Is there some proportion of parcel one that could remain that would allow that parcel to still maintain the requirements and characteristics listed in R1, instead of taking it so far as putting it into a non-conforming situation? And I think the only reason that has merit is because this is a unique situation where the roads bend, and they come to a point. We're not talking about a block that has homes on each side and has a corner-corner situation. This is, you know, you've got both roads curving and coming to a ninety-degree. You have some weird spots in there. You have these pie-shaped elements already, so I think there is some bit of merit to some configuration in there that's non-traditional and maybe a little less, you know, nonlinear. But I think your proposal, as it stands currently, is too far-reaching.
Okay, well, I certainly would be amenable to something that wouldn't encroach on my pool, but it still wouldn't conform to your 110-foot setback. So Mr. Tarmino maybe have something to say about that, but...
I think that's something you would have to work out with a surveyor, an engineer, someone who could look at the geometry of the property.
All the surveys have been done, and that's where all these figures came from, a surveyor that I paid to do survey for three properties that cost $2,100. But, no, I appreciate that, sir, that there is a possible opportunity just to move that back a bit. But again...
Madam President?
Sure. Were you done?
I'm done.
Yeah.
Okay.
What he suggests makes sense. If you, see parcel one, how you have the red line so close to the house?
Right.
Move that line a lot closer to the pool.
Right.
As close as possible, that still leaves you the situation that you want. What he's trying to say is, and he's saying it a lot more eloquently than I am...
Yes, I think that was very good.
Yeah, it's just, this is just, you're taking too much of parcel one and incorporating it into parcel three. It would have to be far less significant, and then it would be something that would be palatable and something that we could work with.
Right, I mean, you probably can't see on the picture, but yeah, I guess you do see that square or rectangle there. That's a garden that we cultivate things on. But if we could, you know, make it halfway back, which is, I think it's thirty-five feet back, if we went in the middle of seventeen feet, that should be, I would suggest...
What I would say, looking at this...
Yeah.
Is if you took the edge of the garden that is as close to your house as possible and ran the line straight down from there, because that still gives you the little bump out of the patio or whatever that is there, but it leaves intact a significant enough piece of the backyard of parcel one where that would be something that I think would be agreeable.
Mr. Tarmino, if, are you done? Councilman Jolly, if I can real quick ask you, 120, where would he be at on a 120 on that parcel one than if we moved that red line back?
Well, I think what you're referring to is the lot depth.
Yes.
And the parcel, as I understand the survey, is deficient as it exists today.
Oh, okay.
You'll see the dimension...
Oh, there it is, yeah.
Of 115 feet.
Yeah.
So what makes this lot conforming is it has the additional ten feet of width.
Right.
So...
Is there any solution to that?
Changing the split, as was suggested, to some point just east of some of those improvements that you're referring to, I think it's the patio, would still result in a deficient lot depth that would require council's approval.
Yeah.
The lot area could probably, maybe complied with. I'm not sure, we'd have to do the math on that.
Okay.
So that would reduce the amount of deficiencies substantially.
Okay.
The question is, you know, their willingness to compromise that much versus something. The other thing there is that would more than meet the rear yard setback requirement for the house on parcel one, which I believe must be thirty feet.
Sure.
Right now, they're showing twelve feet with this split.
Okay.
Moving that back at least eighteen feet would comply with that.
Okay. Do you understand what Mr. Tarmino just said?
I think so, because my lot's a pie-shaped lot, too, the one I live in.
Correct, yep.
And I think that's eight feet or whatever, and that's what he's saying, that would make the back a thirty-foot... Sure, I appreciate...
You're amenable to that, sir?
Yes.
Okay. All right, go right ahead, Councilman Bar.
To Mark or Paul, for him, if he were to pursue that, does he modify this one, or do we handle this one, and he submits a new petition? What's the best way for him to go through that process?
He would actually submit a revised survey for your consideration at the next meeting or whenever you decide to postpone this.
Okay.
Well, let's not make him come back.
Well, you're gonna have to come back for this, I would argue. This is a...
You gotta come back for this?
Pretty extreme, yeah.
If it's a deny.
No, if it's a deny, I'm...
If it's a deny, no.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, in his best interest to explore that, do I need to withdraw my motion?
Yes.
Well, I guess I don't have a motion, it's a study meeting, so...
Well, you made the motion on consent.
What's the best way to proceed?
Denying on consent, you had, did you want to change it?
If you're considering doing this, you might want to put it into the committee and have him come up with new plans. That's probably the best way.
Let's do that.
Okay, committee, so draw some new plans, we're gonna put you in committee. Chances are, you'll hear it next year, beginning in 2020, okay? And Councilwoman McIntyre will direct that for you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Bar, you're withdrawing...
I'll offer committee of the whole for consent, if there's no objection.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're withdrawing the evidence tonight.
Thank you, yeah.
And may I just say, get the water bill checked, because we, I mean, it's going to committee, but you won't get any approvals if there are outstanding bills of any sort with the city.
All right.
So you got a while, yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, certainly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay. Was there anyone from the audience wishing to speak to that any further? If not, we're gonna move on to...
He has.
Oh, we do have someone coming, okay. Sir, I need to ask you your name and address for the record again.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am. Bill Schmidt, 29688 McIntyre. I live down the street from these folks. They are really nice people. They keep their house and property really terrific. The suspect house on Robert was a wreck until they bought it. It was a real, true live, just a wreck on the inside. There was mold, it was just, it was a terrible house. They bought it, they improved it, just, it's a showplace. These folks have done marvelous things to the neighborhood and to their properties, and anybody who lives near them just bask in their reflected glory, tell the truth. So I urge everyone to swing on by and take a look at what they did. I don't know them well enough, other than...
He's trying to get an invitation.
You want to swim in the pool, sir?
You know, I don't swim.
You could float.
But they just do such nice stuff. And since you guys are really seemingly interested in this unique situation, I do recommend that you, I urge you, to go take a look-see.
That's great, well, thank you.
And maybe you'll get an invitation to...
That's true, that's true.
There you go, so thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you for your kindness.
We appreciate that, thank you very much. Yeah, they said it was foreclosed, a couple of those houses, as I recall, earlier. Anyhow, okay, we're on to item five. This is a request to renew Microsoft Enterprise Agreement using State of Michigan contract pricing. Hello, good evening, Mr. Tech.
Mr. Tech, Casey O'Neil, IAS Director. This is a renewal of our Microsoft Enterprise Agreement for three years. This agreement covers our licensing for Microsoft Office, Office 365, our cloud-based email, as well as our client server access licensing, and we're using the State of Michigan MyDeal contract pricing and purchasing through Dell.
Okay. Any questions, council, or direction?
Madam President?
Yes, please.
This is something essential that we need to conduct city business. I'll offer an approving for the consent agenda.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? No one else? Thanks, Casey. You have an approving on consent, which means you don't have to come back on the sixteen. All right.
If you want to.
But you can if you want to, like Council Vice President Jolly said. Okay, item six, a request to approve an E-Payment Services Agreement. This is brought to us by Perks and Recreation. Go right ahead, you can explain it.
Thank you, Council President. Ted Davis, representing Perks and Recreation. We are requesting that council approve a merchant agreement with CP Pay. This is for credit and debit card and ACH processing. This works in conjunction with our new cloud-based recreation management software. This was approved previously by Council Resolution 412-18. This is a sole-source provider for us with credit and debit and ACH processing for the software.
Great, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I will offer an approving for the consent agenda. This is something that will add value and efficiency to the services provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Anyone else from the council, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, that's an approving on consent. Thank you very much for your patience. Item seven is a request approval to accept a 2018 assistance for firefighters grant in the amount of $471,242, and a request to authorize... What's wrong?
Sorry.
All righty, chief, help us out.
Good evening, Madam President and fellow council members. I'm here tonight to request an approving to accept a grant award. In 2018, the AFG, the Assistance to Firefighter Grant, we partook in a joint effort with sixteen other communities spearheaded by Dearborn Heights, that overall grant award came in at the end of the summer, beginning of the fall this year for the amount of... That overall grant award came in at the end of the summer, beginning of the fall this year for the amount of two-point-four million, two million, four-hundred-thirty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The portion of which is earmarked for Livonia. The total grant award for us is four hundred and seventy-one thousand, two forty-two, of which forty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and ninety cents is the City of Livonia's share. It's a ten percent match. That is going to be used to replace aging equipment that has either reached its life expectancy at ten years or nearing its life expectancy. That is critical equipment, is our, it is our communication equipment that is basically our safety net, earmarked in all of our rescue attempts, firefighting capabilities, emergency medical services. They're used, they're abused in very high heat type of environments, IDLH environments. And it is a, an item that was going to go on a future capital outlay expenditure, so the award of nearing a half million dollars is a, is a huge benefit to the City of Livonia. The funds would be coming out of the nine-one-one account that are unspent funds currently waiting for use.
Excellent, chief. Direction, Council Councilman Vice President Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I again will offer an approving for the consent agenda, commend the department and those involved in getting the taxpayers almost half a million dollars. So it's a great, great effort, and I'm sure they appreciate it, we appreciate it as well, good luck.
Thank you.
Very nice, okay. Any other comments from the council, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, we'll move on to item eight.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief, which is an award of contract from our Public Service Division to supply propane to the city from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore.
Good evening, Council, Doug Moore with the Public Service Division. Before you tonight to ask for contract with propane, we're using the Oakland County Liquid Propane Gas Delivery Bid that is good from now through February twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-two. We currently have sixteen pickup trucks, twenty-six ZTR moors, three hot-patch trailers, three forklifts, numerous barbecue grill tanks and heater tanks. The cost is twenty-three cents markup per gallon. This is a ten cent less than the State of Michigan price. The price base is based on the NGL Marysville Rack price, which is the local version of the Texas Belleville price. The pricing will be sent to us each week, so we know where we are paying for the week. It's currently being billed per day. And we do have our own one-thousand-gallon fueling station at the DPW yard.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Counsel, any questions or direction?
Madam President.
Yes?
I'm happy to offer an approving for consent.
Okay.
Glad to see that we're still utilizing this where we are, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an approving on consent by Council Vice President, was there any others? Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one from the audience, we have an approving on consent, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Certainly, item nine is also Public Service Division. This is a request to approve purchase utilizing the State of Michigan MyDeal, is that how you say it?
Yes, MyDeal.
MyDeal, purchasing program, go right ahead.
This item was approved in the two thousand and nineteen capital budget request. It's being purchased for the water and sewer section, but it is available for the other DPW sections. Ostensibly used for water break repairs, sewer line repairs and trenching functions. It's more flexible and safer and easier to use for digging holes. It will be trailered to the jobs in the city on the associated Trail King trailer. We have one other lake unit in the fleet, and it lessens the need for the backhoes. It's being purchased through the MyDeal program with the state. The cost for the excavator is a hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The trailer cost is sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents, for a total cost of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and ninety-three cents. And the servicing dealer is Michigan Caterpillar out of Novi.
All right, great, okay, counsel, your pleasure, your direction.
Madam President, I'll defer to Mr. Kritzman.
We don't want him set the world record. As much as we wanted to sit here in silence and see if Mr. Jolly would run the table on the rest of the agenda, that certainly isn't fair. This is one of those items that it's great to see us investing in, and I know that operationally, operationally, it will be of great benefit to your departments. I just had a experience recently in our neighborhood where we had a water main break. And I happened to be driving out of the neighborhood and saw it, and being the responsible individual that I was, I stopped and texted my friend Don Roraf out there.
Fixed it, fixed it.
I did not, I would have fixed it, but this excavator wasn't available at the time. So, and I know how fast that that was taken care of, but at the same time, we did have two water main breaks in the city at the same time. And so this will give us additional flexibility, and with that, I will offer an approving resolution and ask that that be placed on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Councilman Kritzman. All righty, if there's no others, thank you, Mr. Moore, anybody else from the audience? Anyone wishing to speak to us? Hearing and seeing no one, we'll move on to item ten, which is also from the Public Service Division, a request to approve purchase utilizing the State of Michigan MyDeal purchasing program. Go right ahead, Mr. Moore.
This item was also approved in the two thousand and nineteen capital budget. It's also being purchased through the MyDeal program. We have one similar skid loader in the fleet. This will also be used by the water and sewer section, but will be available to the other sections of DPW to use. It'll be used for cleaning up water main breaks, cleaning up with trenching and digging issues, and can be used to clear trails to sewer crossings. The purchase price is seventy-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-five cents, and the servicing dealer will also be Michigan Caterpillar out of Novi.
Madam President.
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman.
Always appreciate the detailed proposals, Doug, you guys do a good job of that. I'd offer the approving on this for consent if there's no objection.
Councilman Barr has offered approving on consent, there's no objection, yes, Councilman Vice President Jolly.
Is this your last item, Mr. Moore?
No, I have two more.
Okay. I'll save it then.
Still going.
All right, nope. Okay, anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this? Hearing and seeing no one, then we'll move on to item eleven, which is a request to approve purchase utilizing the State of Michigan contract from our Public Service Division for a one-four-wheel tractor with utility attachments, fund budgeted funds. Mr. Moore.
This item was approved in the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty capital budget. It'll be purchased through the state contract pricing between the State of Michigan and John Deere. It's gonna be used in the park maintenance section for towing mowing decks, ball diamond maintenance and sidewalk snow removal. It will not increase the fleet. A new Holland tractor circa mid-nineties will be auctioned off or will be gotten rid of through the auctioning process. We will have three current units on hand. The auctioned-off tractor has been stationed at the golf courses for about the last ten years. The tractor that's being replaced will be moved out to the golf courses for them to share with us. The cost for the loader is forty-three, the tractor unit is forty-three thousand, thirty-five dollars and five cents. The loader attachment is six thousand, six hundred, ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. The plow is three thousand, seventy dollars and twenty cents for a total purchase price of fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and seventy-five cents. And the servicing dealer will be Bader and Son out of South Lion.
Counsel, your, yes, go right ahead.
I just have a question. This is out of the two thousand and twenty-one capital budget?
Yes.
Okay, but the rest are out of the.
Last year's.
Last year's, okay, got it, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Direction?
I would be happy to offer the approving resolution on consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McIntyre, thank you. Anyone else? No other discussion, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, we'll move on to item twelve, which is the last one, from our Public Service Division, thank you. Request for authorization to purchase two animal control officer trucks utilizing State of Michigan MyDeal purchasing program.
Yes, the, the two trucks were approved in the two thousand and nineteen capital budget. The two F-50 trucks are being purchased through the state contract pricing with Signature Ford out of Owasso. The animal boxes are being purchased through Swab Wagon Company out of Elizabeth Town, Pennsylvania. We did receive quotes from four companies, with Swab being the most cost-efficient for the needed items meeting our specifications. The trucks will be shipped to Pennsylvania for the animal boxes to be put on and then returned to us. Our current trucks do not meet our needs, they will be disposed of through the auctioning process. The new animal boxes will be more user-friendly for the staff, will also include heat and air conditioning to minimize daily runs to the Humane Society. The costs for the trucks are sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars. The upfitting with the animal boxes will be forty thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, and we will have approximately four thousand dollars for shipping, for a total cost of one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty cents.
Madam President.
Yeah, go ahead.
I reviewed this item in detail earlier, did a nice job of laying out the need, I'd be happy to offer this for consent, approving for consent if there's no objection.
Madam President.
Yes, go right ahead.
Nothing to add to what Mr. Barr said, but this is an opportunity to point out, I think we've had the same two animal control officers for some time, is that correct?
Yes.
And, you know, I can speak, from my experience in my time at the court, they both handle themselves very professionally, and it's a, it's a good opportunity to call them out and acknowledge what they do for our community, because oftentimes, you know, we do have animals in Livonia, right? But we don't have, no, I mean, we have deer and we have, you know, stray dogs from time to time and all these other kinds of situations, like other communities do. But it's never a problem here, because we have people who are on the ball and people who take care of it right off the bat, and we appreciate that. So if you could send our acknowledgement to them, it'd be very much appreciated.
I will do that, thank you.
Mr. Moore, when you said air, heat and air, does that mean the present ones do not have it?
They do not have it, so if, during the summer, when we get the really hot days, if they pick up an animal, they almost immediately need to drive to Westland to drop it off.
So that's for the animals as well as them?
Yes.
Okay, I was trying to understand.
They have air conditioning in the cab.
Yeah, I drive pretty quick then, too.
The back part where the animals are stored does not have any kind of circulation.
All righty, thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Oh, thank you, okay, great. Well, you have an approving on consent, and that ends your evening, Merry Christmas to you, too, for all your stuff.
Thank you very much, Merry Christmas.
Yes, sir. Okay, item thirteen then, did anyone from the audience want to speak on that one? No, okay. All right, item thirteen is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve contract with Graphic Science Planning Department, Mr. Tormina.
It's not often that I ask for money, but here I am.
It isn't.
Pretending to be Todd for a minute, so. I'll talk really slow.
You both have blue shirts on, it's true, yeah.
So the Planning Department is requesting authorization to hire Graphic Sciences of Madison Heights, Michigan for digital imaging services. This is a project that involves scanning over forty years of planning petition files. This includes about a hundred and fifteen banker boxes and two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand pages, including plans, correspondence and minutes. All the files will be indexed, they'll be converted to a format compatible with Laserfish, which is the software platform that the city uses to search and retrieve historical documents. Completion of this project will ensure long-term retention of files and documents that contain vital information on properties and land development projects, including zoning, waiver-of-use site plans. Unit pricing is based on Graphic Sciences contract with the State of Michigan for scanning and microfilm services, and as such, we are respectfully requesting council's approval to waive the city's competitive bid process. Last year, the Inspection Department contracted with Graphic Sciences to undertake a similar project that resulted in significant success. This project, or this proposed contract would be based on a not-to-exceed amount of seventy thousand dollars from budgeted funds.
Great, thank you, Councilman Kritzman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair to Mr. Tormina, does this get us closer to the site plan approval enforcement program that we've been kicking around for a while?
Yeah, absolutely, so no longer will we have to go retrieve these files from the basement and that sort of thing. Any member of staff will have direct access to the files at their fingertips, so.
That's great, and this is something, I tell you, as I get close to the end of my, my eight years here, this is one of those things that I would point to as, as an item that, once it's in place, I think it will be of great benefit to the city, and I'm certainly not trying to take credit for it. Everybody else did all the hard part, I was just the pest who kept asking the question.
You did good.
For years. But I think what this will do is, this will give the Inspection Department, will give the Planning Department far easier access. I've said time and again, we run people through a site plan approval process, potentially sometimes through the Zoning Board of Appeals. We run them through Planning Commission, excuse me, I said that one already, and then through City Council. There's, there's often two approvals at Planning Commission, two approvals at City Council, and then things kind of get a little more difficult to manage, and what gets built out there. And as things are modified over time, it gets very hard to enforce. And having this digitized and categorized in such a way that the Inspection Department and, you know, those in zoning and planning are able to access it, it'll help us enforce those conditions that are set forth in these approvals. So I think this is a great step forward, and I will be more than happy to offer an approving resolution on the consent agenda.
Great, thank you, Councilman Kritzman. Yes, Council Vice President, please.
Just from an operations perspective, once these are all scanned, will you get rid of the hard copies?
No, we will most likely mothball those at a storage facility that is off-site. We have the space available over at a storage building behind the police station. There will be rare instances, I hope, that we have to retrieve certain documents, paper files that, for whatever reason, might not have been scanned accurately. We might need to get additional information from plans that we just can't get from, from the scanned copies, basically. So that, that's why, at least initially, we intend to save it, to save those plans.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. We have an approving on consent then, by Councilman Kritzman, anybody from the audience wishing to speak to this? Hearing and seeing no one, we'll move into item fourteen, which is our last item for the evening, is a.
One more page.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's second to last, um, excuse me, thank you, Councilman McIntyre. This is a request for a waiver-of-use for an extension, this brought to us from the Planning Commission, and I'm gonna let Mr. Tormina proceed.
And this is a request for a one-year extension, this involves the construction of a gas station at the corner of Seven Mile and Inkster Roads. Council granted the approval back on October fifteenth of two thousand and eighteen. Soon after, well, actually in February of two thousand and nineteen, the Zoning Board of Appeals granted variances involving the lot area, building setback and parking. The action of the ZBA was challenged in circuit court by neighboring property owners, and on October eighth, the court affirmed the Zoning Board of Appeals decision granting the variances. However, because of the delay resulting from the court case, the petitioner was unable to secure any permits or commence construction, and hence the reason he's asking for the extension. I will note that the Planning Commission resolution adopted on November nineteenth includes two additional conditions that were not previously part of the council's approval, and that is, those are number four and five. One deals with the current open status of the facility as, in terms of its environmental conditions, and requires that that be addressed to the satisfaction of the Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes and Energy, or Eagle, as well as Lara. And then secondly, Planning Commission wants to limit the hours of operation in this case to, from five-thirty a.m. to eleven p.m., to minimize disturbance on the surrounding neighborhood. That was something that was not considered by the council originally.
Thank you, Mr. Tormina. Any questions for Mr. Tormina before I go to the petitioner? Hearing and seeing none, go right ahead, sir, your name and address for the record again.
Ali Bazi, address is three-zero-eight-two-five, Twenty-Six Mile Road, New Haven, Michigan.
Okay, Mr. Bazi, you want an extension, is that?
We are requesting an extension, and I would like to address the additional items that were added on.
Go right ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you. In regards to item number four, we, when we initially acquired the property back in two thousand and eight, we had an environmental company, environmental engineer, PM Environmental, that handled the Phase One, Phase Two, is what we call, in regards to determine any contamination on the property. Remediation took place and continued to take place probably for approximately four years. We still are engaged with PM Environmental. We will get a full closure report as part of the process that we go through with any property that we acquire or own. So that will be addressed fully as the Planning Commission requested, and that will be addressed on our end during the construction phase. In regards to item number five, I was. number five, I was not at the last Planning Commission meeting, and originally, when we had this approved, our intent was to open 24 hours, and based on that, the performance of the business, we would then determine whether we thought it would be feasible to stay open 24 hours or to limit the hours of operation. I would ask from the counsel that item number five does not put a hindering factor on our progress to move forward with the construction phase of this project. And on one last note, I would like to also address is that we were, once we had the blessing of the counsel, we were moving full speed ahead to pull permits and to begin construction. Unfortunately, of no control of our own, there was a complaint that was filed, as the township planner did advise here, and obviously, city attorney was part of the, part of the case. We were kind of, I guess our hands were tied till this matter was resolved, and once it was resolved, we submitted our full plans for permitting, but the timing of everything kind of put us in a situation where we couldn't obtain permits, and here we are today.
Well, nice to have you back. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, go right ahead.
I'm happy to offer an approving resolution as provided by the Planning Commission. I think the hour restriction that they've put in place is absolutely appropriate for that particular corner, Inxter and Seven Mile. And to be honest with you, I think the prospect of a 24-hour facility there is not something that would be welcomed or appropriate. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Sir, how quickly do you plan on doing something in regards to the property, then?
We've already submitted plans to the--
Oh, pardon me.
--Building Department--
Yep.
--for approval and to the county, for Wayne County approval as well. So as soon as we get approval from Wayne County, then we go back to the Building Department with those approvals and any comments that the Building Department may have in regards to any adjustments we need to make.
Well, good luck. You know, I've had a couple calls about that property, saying, geez, do we know if it's for sale or anything? I always tell them to call the city, of course, but I'm just saying--
Thank you.
That seems like it's going to be a popular lot over there. Yeah.
We are hoping. And if I may address the councilman's, in regards to the hours, you know, opening 24 hours is, A, from a business perspective, gives us a sense of security in a sense of that there's someone on staff. If there's any break-ins or anything like that, it's kind of, it deters it. There's a 711 that is, that's open 24 hours. There's another station on the other side in Redford that is also open 24 hours. I believe that the impact on us being 24 hours is going to be minimal in regards to what the surrounding businesses are already doing.
Go right ahead. Sure.
I would say the fact that there are two 24-hour businesses operating already on two of those four corners is just the more reason why I don't think it's appropriate to have your business be 24 hours. And you are backing up to two residential properties as well, sir.
I understand. Understand. And, but also keep in mind that it was originally approved without the 24-hour consensus, but no fault of our own, we had to go back and go through the process again.
With all due respect, had I been aware at the time, I would have imposed something similar at the time that this initially came through. So my motion stands, like I said, I look forward to you being a great business in the community. I think you will be. We went through quite a process with you initially to get this all squared away, and you've handled yourself well throughout the process. Just in these particular aspects, I have to agree with the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sorry, Councilman.
That's all right. Madam, through the chair to Mr. Toramina. Do you know offhand the other stations that we've approved over the last however many years? It's the 11 o'clock that strikes me as almost early. Is that a common timeframe that we have put on other stations, or is there a general consensus timeframe? Because I'd be interested in seeing what those are.
Yeah, and I don't know, well, quite frankly, I'm not sure in what instances we've limited the hours for gas stations. I would have to go back and check. I believe the hours came from a discussion that occurred at a Planning Commission study meeting when the question came up, and the petitioner indicated that they have many stores throughout their portfolio, many of which are 24 hours. Some are, have limited hours from 5:30 to 11:00. So I think, I think there are cases where he's got stores where the hours are limited to that, and that's probably what the Planning Commission used as its basis for setting this condition. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Yeah.
The question was asked, and we answered it.
Okay. And I guess, all that aside, I'd still rather know what we, as a community, have imposed on others. So if that's something you wouldn't mind looking into--
We'll take a look and get that to you before the voting meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kritzman. Anyone else? Yes.
So we'll leave that in the regular?
It sounds like it.
I would appreciate it.
Yep. You got that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, certainly. All right, sir, any other comments before we leave this? No? No? Okay. Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All righty. Anybody from the audience wishing to speak to this item? Hearing and seeing no one, we will continue now on our last item, which is item 15, which is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission. This is petition 201910215, submitted by Tizio Architects, Inc., on behalf of Citizens Bank to construct and operate a freestanding drive-up ATM kiosk within the parking lot of the shopping center on the west side of Middle Belt Road between Claride Avenue and Seven Mile Road in the northeast quarter of Section 11. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you, Madam President. This item is very similar to the project, the design that was presented to counsel at the time of the rezoning, and it is to operate this ATM kiosk for Citizens Bank in the parking lot of Mid-7 Plaza Shopping Center, which is located on Middle Belt Road just south of Seven Mile Road. Just to recap on a couple of the key stats, this is a site that's about 5.36 acres. The shopping center is 56,700 square feet. Main tenants include Pet Supplies Plus, as well as Planet Fitness. This kiosk would occupy an area at the south end of the parking lot. That area is roughly 20 feet by 90 feet in overall dimensions. There would be approximately nine parking spaces removed in order to accommodate the drive-up kiosk. Parking for the center would still be in compliance with the zoning ordinance. There is one aspect to the design that does not meet our standards with respect to drive-up facilities, and that's the amount of stacking. You'll see the three vehicles shown on this plan. That includes the one vehicle at the ATM. The ordinance requires stacking of at least four, including the one at the ATM. So the shy one space, petitioner, however, presented the information at the Planning Commission meeting indicating that this condition is similar to other kiosks they have around the state, and apparently does not present problems because they rarely get more than one or two cars at a time at these facilities. Terms of the design, they would restripe the parking along that side of the property. Here's the design of the kiosk. I think it's pretty simple to understand. In terms of the scope of the project, it's a canopy that overhangs partially on the driver's side of the, of the drive-through lane. There are signs on all four sides of this kiosk. That's something that inspection will look at and more than likely require variances. And with that, Madam President, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Planning Commission is recommending approval of the project as proposed. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Councilman Barr?
Yeah, through the chair to Mark. Mark, can you just refresh my memory? Where have we seen this already? I know we talked about this. Did this come here once and we send it back?
No. Counsel gave first reading on the zoning--
On the zoning.
On October 2nd. So second reading is on, so you've seen this design for this particular one. Where do we have these around the city? This would be the first one that I'm aware.
Okay.
That would be a completely independent ATM kiosk without having a principal use located at the site.
And to make it conforming with our stacking requirement, is there any reason, other than obviously the petitioner not wanting to incur any additional cost, which I understand, but is there any reason from a parking perspective or anything why that couldn't be done, just extended down so that it can meet that?
He would probably have to push the kiosk one space further to the east in order to accomplish that because he's trying to use that drive aisle. So it, could it be done? Yes, absolutely.
So from a city perspective, there's no issue. It's just, he's saying he doesn't need it, and--
I think that's fair.
Okay. And I see him up there. He can probably answer that for me, but that's all the questions I have, Madam President. Thanks.
Certainly, certainly. Councilman McIntyre, did you have a question?
I understand why we have stacking requirements for drive-up windows of all sorts. I also feel that a business knows its model probably better than we do, and if they're comfortable with this number of stacking, then I'm comfortable because it's in, it's in the best interest of the business to have appropriate stacking. Because if the stacking is, if there's not sufficient space for the number of cars stacked up, you know, 80% of the time, then people aren't going to do business there. And I remember when we approved the first freestanding Starbucks, can't remember if it was Planning or counsel, but there was a lot of discussion because the stacking, I think, didn't conform with our requirements or recommendations. So I'm comfortable with this stacking, even though it doesn't match what we've required. I think maybe when we were looking at stacking requirements, there were fewer, the ratio of drive-up banks to teller windows was probably different than it is today, and with more freestanding, freestanding ATMs, I would guess that you have probably fewer cars.
Maybe smaller, maybe smaller cars. Smaller cars. All right. Motorcycles. I mean, yeah. Okay, Mr. Tizio, go right ahead, sir.
Bonjour, c'est Ben Tizio, Tizio Architects, 19815 Farmington Road. As was mentioned before about the stacking, we actually had the facilities pull the numbers. They have 300 freestanding ATMs around the country.
Wow.
And they looked at all of them, and they have never had four in the queue. Rarely do they get three, and they feel here, maybe they might get two. Frankly, that's why I proposed it. And, Ms. McIntyre, you're correct. They did a lot of research to make sure that we got this right, because you don't want to have a problem with your customers. They're going to leave. They're not coming back--
That's right.
--if they're inconvenienced. So yes, we did look at that very closely. I also did want to point out a couple of things. We did have a conference call this morning. The representative was supposed to be here. He called me about 5 o'clock. It's been. I'm shaking. I'm ill. I'm not feeling good. I apologize to the counsel that Mr. Gago could not be here. So my apology that he could not be here, if you have any questions, I ask of the bank. We did, I did want to pass on some information that we talked about. One is that the current branch is closed on Middle Belt north of Seven Mile. However, the lease is in effect until June of 2001, so they are paying their rent until that time. The other thing that we discussed on the call today is the fact that Citizens still has three full branches in Livonia, the Five Mile in Middle Belt, the Merriman in Plymouth, and Six Mile in Newburgh. So they're not abandoned in Livonia. They're still here. It's just this, this particular location has been difficult as far as making the numbers work, so.
So they're downsizing, in other words?
Yes. Well, at this location, the other branches, I understand, are doing well.
Oh, good.
These decisions to modify, move, or weigh up the food chain, some executive vice president makes those decisions. They rarely will consult down. They, frankly, they look at the numbers.
They don't ask the professor for advice?
They don't, they don't ask the professors. They don't ask the architect.
Darn.
You know? So.
Kritzman would be out of a job now.
That's true.
Yeah.
Maybe Ben's hiring.
Actually, I am. Madam President?
Yes.
I'll offer approving for consent if there's no objection. We had significant discussion on this, I think, at the zoning thing, and I think we're good to go.
Good point. Yes. All right, we have an approving on consent. Any other discussion? Anybody from the audience? Mr. Tizio, you have an approving on consent?
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. All righty, counsel, we're going to go back to audience communication. Two people left. Good Michigan sweatshirt on out there. Thank you. Any other comments? No? Okay. Counsel, where's your--